This one is, does that, that looks good?
Looks good.
Okay. It's 7:03 and I'll call the regular monthly meeting of the Northwood Beach Park and Rest District to order. Um, we have a fairly long agenda and as a result, the things that'll slip probably are the budget, um, which will move over to a special meeting next Tuesday, um, and the environmental report depending on how things go. But, uh, those are the two which I think we're gonna kick, uh, to the, uh, special meeting next Tuesday.
You said the budget, which one?
And the environmental.
Okay, gotcha, thank you.
Yeah, okay. Okay, um, anybody have agenda changes?
I moved that we, uh, moved the motion to re-sign appointment of Commissioner Four on budget issues, I moved from new business after budget board issues.
Okay. Any other changes that anybody wants? Okay, I've got one thing on board in, issues, uh, before we get to that, and that is Sean and Wendy, who wants to be secretary? We haven't got a secretary.
Um, I think we don't need to throw, put me under the bus at the first meeting. As much as I hate to do this, I will, um...
But she did take Dave's position.
She did take Dave's position, however. No, I can actually, um, no, he took the Kirk's position.
It was an empty position that you failed.
It's a Kirk's position. Anyway, um, I would be more than happy to, uh...
Okay, great, so, um, can we put in whoever's making the minutes that Sean Merrill is the secretary of the board? Everybody agrees with that? Thank you, sir.
Sure.
Okay. We've had a challenging couple of weeks and, um, the position four thing is something which, um, we acted on in our last meeting and, um, it was totally illegal the way we did it and I'm going to read a declaration because, as we've done the research, if you do Rogers or Roberts rules, everything works out one way. There's only one minor problem, state law works out a very different way and state law wins, you know, we were working on the other. So, this is a declaration that Commissioner Four position is open. Um, "At the regular me, commission meeting on August 28th, the commission filled the Commissioner Two position previously held by Commissioner Hubbard. It then proceeded to address a replacement for Commissioner Walton, who had submitted his letter of resignation earlier in the meeting. At this point, a fatal flaw occurred in the process. By RCW 4212.00, or .010, a vacancy is caused when a commissioner resigns, but is deemed to occur only upon the effective date or time of the resignation. Commissioner Walton's resignation was dated for midnight, August 28th." In 1978, the Attorney General addressed the timing of appointments to fill vacancies as follows. "The power of appointment that is granted under RCW 35A 1250 depends upon the existence of a vacancy for its exercise. And in case of a prospective, prospective resignation, no vacancy occurs until the effective date thereof." It continues, "In the case of a prospective or anticipated vacancy resulting from a not-yet-effective resignation, the courts have not been liberal. The courts have held that there can be neither a valid appointment nor election of a person to serve for the remainder of the unexpired time, term, until the effective date of the resignation." See Bloat, Etcheterre versus Anderson, one Kentucky cited in CJS number 55, page 266, 26. "The Attorney General concluded any appointment made prior to the effective date of his or her prospective resignation would be premature and hence have no binding legal force or effect." And that's 19, if you want to look it up, it's 1978 Attorney General's Opinions 20. Now, according to district bylaws, section 38, "Commission proceedings are bound by Roberts Rules of Order unless otherwise governed by other bylaws or laws of the State of Washington." We are bound by the State, the laws of the State of Washington and they supersede our bylaws. In the case of the resignation of Commissioner Walton, provisions mentioned above are laws of Washington and they override our use of Roberts rules. As a result, any commission action that occurred before the time of Commissioner Walton's resignation had no validity in law. The election and swearing-in of an incumbent on August 28th were premature and thus had no legal validity. We must now proceed to elec, to elect a new commissioner for position four to fill out the term of Commissioner Walton until the next election and we are past the time of his resignation. This note should be attached to the minutes of the meeting of August 28th to explain the lack of further action on the motions related to position four in that meeting." And so, if somebody would be willing to move that they be attached to our minutes of August 28th when we approve them, I'd really appreciate it.
I would make a motion that this declaration that the Commissioner Four position is open would be added to the, uh, regular board meeting minutes from August 28th, 2014.
It'll just be attached to them, the minutes will stay the same so you'll see all the motions and everything, okay?
I'll second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, it's passed unanimously, thank you. I've learned a lot in the last two weeks. Okay, so, that's the Commissioner, the Commissioner Four position is open and now we have to set up a process to fill the position. And, um, Sean, yes?
Um, we didn't move that on the agenda, Mr. Chairman, so we need to go to public comment.
Oh, so we want to go down to, we'll do that under new business?
Yes, sir.
Okey-dokey, I put a bracket around the vote.
I'm sorry.
No, it's my fault. Okay, public comments, the only public comment name that I saw was Lynn Bot and you've got a minute.
Okay, I got a minute?
Yep.
It was, it was two and it was longer and then, yeah, and it was up to the chairs.
But it was three.
Three? But it was up to the chairs especially because of the list, so I, I'm sure we can...
Am I counting, am I counting the seconds as you guys discuss this or...
No, that doesn't count.
Well, do three, do it.
Hey, can I ask a question, real, may I ask a question? We, we passed, uh, a motion back in spring of 2013, I believe, and what, what that, what was passed was that we would give people three minutes.
Okay, let's do three.
And now, just to go over that whole thing because we probably need to bring this up, it was three minutes per person for a total of 30 minutes. If it went over 30 minutes, that's why that second public comment was at the end and anyone who was not able to speak in the first public comments could then speak in that second public comment section. It wasn't to be used as where a person could speak in both public comment sections, but it was to try to give everyone possible, that, that opportunity to be involved in the process.
Okay.
So it was three minutes.
Okay, three minutes, you go.
Obviously, the appointment of Vicki Robinson to Commissioner Walton's seat was done improperly, but the fact that it was done improperly is not evidence that it was unwise or inappropriate. After the opening paragraphs, Saturday's Wavy News Times article described it as a process area, error, it went on to unceremoniously launch into a personal death. It was devoid of factual integrity and disconnected from its original stated purpose.
Which, which one is that?
The article on the front.
The, the Jesse's article?
Yes. Um, the people, the, when I got done reading it, the conclusion I came to was enough of the lie. The people of the district have been sold a lie and as the article demonstrated, the lie is alive and well. It's been sold so many times that I think some of you may even begun to confuse it with the truth. While the lie has damaged every aspect of the district, the swim team has been at the center of its destruction. The lie claims that NWA has allowed a privileged few to take the taxpayers for a ride. The lie says that those of you who are NWA parents or Northwood Beach masters, the right swim parent, as the article cites, are so corrupted by your own self-interest that you're unwilling or unable to honor the public trust. It's a lie. You know it, I know it, the people need to know it. The truth is that in 2008, '09, '10, '11, and most of '12, NWA produced a profit for this district. It contributed to capital improvements, it contributed to the, um, efficacy of district events and its members did what we hope all of our people do. They became effective and active citizens and made the world a better place. And never ever, not one time, was a single cent of taxpayer money used to help a single swimmer participate in a single competitive event. That didn't happen until the lie was installed, the if you can't decimal with brilliance bathroom pulley system. Over 18 months, the lie lived on. As it gained power, the district's finances withered. The swim team did, had to collapse under its weight. When you appointed Vicki Robinson last month, you threatened the lie. The lie couldn't stand it. In the nearly frantic effort to frighten you away from a good and wise decision to restore health for the district, it's been suggested that those who are ignorant and, um, uninvested in the district will be more affected than board members than those who have knowledge and are vested in its interests. That's obviously not true. I encourage you to push away the inhumane and the personalization and look at the business, the district's finances and its programs. The hit, or, the district has a legacy of financial success. Its programs were once thriving and at a time we can't get 60% of the people to agree on what day of the week it is, 64% said we have earned this district. Today, the district is withering. The finances are in trouble, programs are in str, trouble. That is the legacy of the lie. Public trust that was once solid is virtually gone. It's time for you to protect the legacy of, of success and say that, call the lie a lie. This district needs Vicki Robinson. You need her wisdom, her knowledge and her courage. You need to make it known that the lie is a lie, that you're staking a claim on the truth. I encourage you also to ask the director, to reach out to Wavy News Times, to give them the information they need to stop selling the lie and just to help, um, connect the people to the truth.
We'll take the three minutes. The, um, okay, was that it? All right, okay. Um, what you're saying about the profits with the swim team are absolutely accurate. What you said about the profits with the swim team over the years is absolutely accurate. Uh, the last two years, it's been questioning, but with the director's work this year, it's still, even with all of the problems, slightly in the black. Um, so that, you know, there's been a lot of work, um, on that and yes, it fits in with the downturn in the economy and people's real view that everything the government spends is a waste, which it isn't. And you're absolutely right in calling that.
Well, again, no one has ever paid for a swimmer to compete. Every swimmer has always paid his own swimming dues and that has been marketed as though that isn't what happened and it never happened.
Yeah, it's not marketed by us, though.
No, I know.
Yes, ma'am. Your name?
Um, I, I was quoted in that article and you said it was a lie, but that, that quote's not a lie. I, I would have at that time voted no. I also told, uh, Ms. Jesse that, um, I wasn't here, I didn't know what happened in the discussion with the, I can't see where you... I, I, I didn't know what happened in the discussion with you and I did have concerns and I still do. Um, I, I read your letter that was forwarded from Gino to Alan and most of us today and I'm gonna make a motion later on how we fill this, uh, the process. Um, and I will take you up on your offer to talk to you. I won't do that in public, maybe. But I have a lot of concerns and, and, you know, we'll have to talk before those concerns go away and when I, would stand by that number, so that part is not incorrect, so. But no, just, I wanted to, and she's here, so I wanted her to hear it right from me.
Minutes approval.
Yes, yes, we're on a minutes approval. We've got three sets of minutes. We've got two special meetings, August 14th and August, um, 16th. The 16th, they should be in your package.
I just have two sets of minutes.
Which ones do you have?
I have August 14th special meeting, August 28th regular meeting. That is what I have.
Okay. August 20, August 18th is the additional meeting. Maybe in here. There they are in the corner.
All right, let me pass them out. Yeah, there we go.
If you haven't seen them, give me a couple of minutes to read them. So there's three and we'll do them one at a time.
There's three.
And so, I would take a motion to approve the minutes for the special meeting of August 14th. Somebody move that and then we'll discuss it and then we can decide. It's the one page just inside. Would somebody?
I'm giving them the opportunity.
Well, we'll have it.
Okay, all right. All right, I would, uh, make a motion please to approve the minutes from August 14th, 2014 special meeting.
Would you want a second?
I second.
Okay, discussion. Any changes? Are we all okay? All in favor of accepting the minutes as circulated?
Aye.
Okay.
I would, I would also make a motion please to approve the, the meetings from the special meeting on August 18th, 2014.
A seconder?
A second.
Wait, Wendy? Okay, any questions, comments, concerns? All in, all in favor?
Aye.
And lastly, I would make a motion that we approve the, uh, minutes from the regular meeting on August 28th, 2014.
Just a second.
Wendy, seconds.
I have no comment.
Now, do you have a comment?
No, I do not.
Okay, anybody have comments? Now, we're going to leave, there's the motion here which deals with the, your appointment on Commission Four and it's gonna stay in the record and we're just going to append that other thing so people can see that, okay? Um, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, and that's with the declaration appended to those minutes. Voucher review. Going down through the package. Uh, would somebody move the vouchers be approved?
I moved that we approve vouchers 6385 through 6411 for the total of $85,166.48 and payment transfers in M&amp;O account of $56,915.89.
I second that.
Okay, Steve, seconds. Okay, do you want, this is now time for comments on all of these pages of stats that Aaron's put together. Just one. Are there any questions? Are the credit cards all working out well now? We thought that, that world's stabilized. May I call a question? Or is there any question that you want to ask? Are we okay?
I'm good.
Are you good, Sean?
I'm good, thank you.
Okay, Wendy? That's right, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motions carried. Okay, staff reports. Northwood Beach Fitness Club. How do you want us to proceed? Do you want to talk to them or do we want to just sort of look at the stuff?
Yeah, well, Northwood Beach Fitness Club is in there yet, but they've increased their numbers and they also started a, an adult fitness club because that's what they wanted to start last night.
Is that more of a triathlon club, pardon my question? This is the folks that wanted to do more of a triathlon.
Right, right.
Definitely.
Yeah, a little more training for, a little more other than just the running, stuff like that, this is more of a triathlon type thing.
Is there, is there more information available about, I, I really know very little about this and I, I know I've been at least to the last couple of meetings and the, the report has sounded relatively fission. Um, is there more information available? I, I mean, I think for, I would like to know more about it, um, so that I can...
And, and I will get you more.
Okay, and, and I don't know if there's more information available on the website?
I can grab you the flyer.
There's flyer, but I, I can get more reports.
It's a good start.
Brad works different jobs, so it's only afternoons and it can't be all of the reports that we should, no workout on that.
How many days a week is it?
Three days a week.
Three days a week? For how long each time? Is it an hour?
I guess.
Hour and a half, yeah.
Who said that? An hour and, an hour and a half? And how many, how many kids are in, are doing right now?
They've only had about 13 to 15 kids right now.
Okay. 13 or 15 at once? Really?
But we're advertising more and that's how the, the adults are coming in too because they want to do other things, so. We're trying to increase it with more advertisements and stuff.
Because I'll be honest, I mean, when, when I've came, I haven't seen 13 kids, I've seen like two or three and that, that's why the 13 kind of shocked me, you know, kind of, you know, because, yeah.
I'm Brad, man, or Tom.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Is it, you know, and, and I guess the, the reason I want to question is because, you know, every, I, I'm gonna be honest, we come here every month and, and we, we see the reports, but I really want to know the health programs going forward and the direction. I mean, 13 kids, is that 13 total to the, I mean, and that's what I would like to see next month. Are these 13 kids coming on average of once a week? If, if we're having two adults, we're pay, or two employees, we're paying two employees to watch 13 kids at once, that makes sense.
Right.
But if it's only two or three kids, then, then you really have to question why we would have two employees, you know, working out with two kids, two or three kids. Yeah, and because every time I've came, I, I have personally never seen 13, 13 kids and I've always seen two or three.
And again, this program had only been up a couple of months, so we're trying to increase.
Yeah.
I understand what you're saying.
Yeah, just, just going forward, I mean, a little bit more detail in the report as, as far as... Thank you very much.
Got it, thank you, sir.
You're welcome. That, don't take that, that's, yeah, okay, good, good, all right, thank you.
Aerobics. Aerobics.
The numbers are looking a little better because of working on the glitch, but we had problems with, we're gonna show, we weren't having as many patrons as we should based on money-wise and stuff like that. Julie has done a much better job working on...
How close are your, yeah, how close are your numbers to these numbers?
I haven't had a chance to fully go through it and transition everything, what I'm having to do is go back through and look at the package purchases and see which ones of those were aerobics and break them out from the general ones, so it's kind of a slow process, so hopefully by next meeting I'll have a better idea.
Well, next, next month will be really interesting to see your number rather than the number, a self-declared number.
And the only thing that I can't, and I think, um, I talked to Gino about this a little bit, people that have a membership, we have started, um, having the cashiers check them into a class, so it will show that they use their membership for an aerobics class. I don't know how to quantify that with a dollar amount.
Well, there's a fee for entry, for doing an aerobics.
So if we consider it the aerobics fee?
That's right, they should be paying the aerobics fee for the aerobic slots.
But if we increase the aerobics fee, like it should be, that's gonna be like an extra buck or so, we may not get as many aerobics.
Yeah, that's, but when we do the budget and we're trying to account for it, they have to know that their self-declared number may be self-declared, but their, their revenue has to equal their expenses.
I understand.
Yeah. I have a feeling I'm gonna be pretty close to what they say, it's just, um, it's just a matter of getting it accounted for. Anything else on aerobics? Aquatics director.
I'm here.
Yeah, I know, but I just was reading off the agenda.
It's a lot.
Do you, do you want to give the, is somebody giving a report or do we read?
Um, it's basically what you guys see there is the numbers for the, with the last session in August where we had the 327 over the two sessions, um, a lot of kids have transitioned out of the regular lessons into our private lessons, picking their favorite instructor and wanting to spend a little bit more time with them, or settling on private lessons till 398 virtual, through that student program in August. Um, and then we've got staff training. It's pretty easy to see what we worked on, we're working on, uh, rescue ready, first aid CPR, AED relays, uh, that were rescued and related, team building games, emergency action response, a lot of quick, quick thinking, stuff like that with names, we had a good time with that. Um, I'm gonna continue to work, I'm actually continuing to work with Oak Hammer High School and the Fidalgo Pool over in Amacordus on lifeguard and instructor level aquatics classes and they are short over in the Fidalgo Pool, they don't have any lifeguard instructors or water safety instructor trainers over there, so they, they're coming over here getting those trainings from us here. Um, we also participated in the Wavy Open Water Swim Down in Langley and the Wavy Triathlon, they asked us for their life, for lifeguards.
Have you guys a question about that?
Absolutely.
Did we compensate the lifeguards?
They compensated our lifeguards.
So they weren't, they weren't our lifeguards?
They're not our lifeguards, but they're calling here asking us...
Okay, but they're not our lifeguards when they go down.
They're not our lifeguards, we compensate them.
I'm just worried about right to suffer, we cannot volunteer for something as you know.
They're not ours, they're not ours when they go there.
I'm just making sure that...
And, um, but it's, you know, like I said, we're, we're kind of the two, go-to people and the same with Sketchy Head Country Club, they're calling us, asking us if we have anybody who we think might want to go down there and help them. They're of course compensated by Sketchy Head, uh, for that, if they're out of our, out of our reach at that point. Um, we have lifeguard training, CPR, AED first aid training that's gonna be coming up, this is both for the aquatic side and for non-aquatic, so we actually had, uh, quite a few community members who have come to us asking for CPR and first aid training. The Red Cross is really not doing a whole lot in this area right now, so they're coming to us, they're getting sent over here, so we're gonna be running those training classes in addition to the lifeguarding and lifeguarding instructor class starting next month in October. So we, we're gearing up for that. We've got three of us instructors who are going to be sharing the responsibilities of getting those done.
Do we have a contract with Fidalgo for this or how does this work?
Yeah, they, they, they compensate us for the training. I, if I recall, the last time that we did a training for them, we made about $500 from that.
Is it written somewhere so we know who's responsible for what? After the last two weeks, I'm getting a little sensitive, the pickings of law.
Sure, we invoice them and I would be more than happy to ask you and make sure...
As long as we have a good paper trail and know what our responsibilities are.
Yeah. And, and then the, the other one was, it was an ongoing conversation with the Island County Health Department regarding the lifeguarding and staffing. One of the things that they have reiterated several times is the necessity for us to keep very thorough records on lifeguarding certifications and what occurs during staff training, so they have actually come in and, and pulled those and asked to look for them, so they're readily available anytime they want, they might have a binder, everything there, but other than that, if you, don't worry about it.
Hey, Hurricane?
Questions?
Yes, sir.
Real quick, uh, we were at the, uh, the Southwood Beach Triathlon and I saw your lifeguards there and, uh, I just, if you could give word back to them, even though they weren't working for us, they conducted themselves very, very well there. I was really proud of them, actually, and just, just watching them, how they, they acted and treated people was good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, they were out, you know, cheering people on and stuff, so cool, thanks.
Steve, Sean, any questions?
Yes, sir.
Wendy?
No.
Okay. Facilities and maintenance.
Yeah, I do have one. This is a hard question to ask, but I gotta ask it. So, when we go up there and we're working with Fidalgo, this is not taking away from stuff here that are, okay.
And most of Fidalgo is coming here.
Okay.
Um, I have gone to them before, but we make sure everything's covered.
Cool. Yeah, I mean, you under, you understand why I'd ask that, yeah.
Absolutely.
Cool, thanks.
Facilities and maintenance. Gino?
Uh, you know, it'll be in new business also, yeah. We have the pump, Matt's been doing a great job with the maintenance around there, with the...
Stop me back for a moment there.
We're working on that, kind of, but the pump, the new pump, it came in, but there is, as you all know, there is a couple pieces that got broke during transit, so they are on order and they have been on order. We haven't been able to, they're on... We haven't been able to, they're on back.
Any idea when they're gonna get them?
No, they're ahead. They've been on back over the few months.
So they adjusted, right?
They're working on it.
I think at this point, they definitely need to...
The attendance report, um, uh, for August is the one thing that's left, but there's no comparable there. Um, you know, there, unless we see it like for last year as well, or for last month.
Which Erin just told me how to go back and do that this last week, so...
So next month you'll do this?
Next month I will work on that, yes.
Thank you. It's sort of, I don't pretend to know how many people are in what.
You will notice on there, I did break it down, so you can see aerobics attendance, I'm in the military dependence instead of just all being on the military.
Okay, um... Is the aerobics number six thirty-seven on this, or forty-six?
The one, I'm looking at the dependent aerobics is one oh two, and then regular aerobics, I think, is the forty-six. And then there's aerobics punch cards down below.
Those punch cards, for, that's twenty. So that comes to one sixty-six as against nine hundred and seventy patrons. That's a bit of a difference.
And I think a lot of those others are punch cards and, um, like previously purchased punch cards. One thing I need to look at, seeing how we can, uh, make a little more cohesive, is just the way that attendance numbers are calculated, because, you know, your daily person that comes in and pays their admission, they count as one admission then. The way that historically we have calculated attendance based on punch cards is, when a punch card is sold, for the month it is sold in, we count that as ten people for that month, if it was a ten punch card.
You just check them off as you go, yeah.
Mm-hmm. So I think if we can make that a little more cohesive, so it's consistent between the two, that we would see more accurate numbers.
So it's an ongoing process till next month, and you got a flag, so we'll come back next month and see what you're doing.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Sean?
Um, I'm pretty sure Julie, you can take the NWRC off of there.
Okay.
I've been going for a couple of years.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, you know, and that's kind of the list I inherited, that I just go through each month and add them in there.
I understand.
Um, can I just, here is a difference in the way this is done over here at your house, which is part of my folks' idea. I think that if you look at, for instance, some school says three ninety-eight. If you look at last year, because each of those three hundred and ninety-eight people came at times, they were counted as eight visits. And I think that's happened here in other places.
That, that would make quite a difference in numbers.
It does make a difference, you should.
Thank you.
And if you can alter it that way, you just probably need to know that's what you're doing.
Well, I think that this is something that, we're, we're working on it, and hopefully we'll get better stats by next month. Um, it's been a process, but the process required a whole rejigging at the front desk, so it's reasonable. It's taking a little time to get it, get it finished. But thank you. Okay, new business.
Is there an NWAQ report? Are we going to just discuss this during the, 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 uh...
There's no NWAQ report on the agenda, but if, um, you wish...
Well, I mean, it's just not part of the, it's usually part of it, I just kinda wondered.
Um, did you have anything you wanted to raise about NWAQ?
No, I'm just...
I heard you talk about it.
That's fine. That's what we'll do, that's fine, that's cool.
Okay, new busi- any other unfinished business? Okay, on to new business. We did that declaration, we can't rescind an appointment, because that's Robert's rules, and if we rescinded it, then we couldn't do it, because Vicki and I went through the whole process of getting Vicki into position four, and then it all got shot down and lost, so, you know. Um, but we can do a selection process now and timetable for appointment of commissioner for.
I'd like to make a motion that we extend the offer, extend the search for applicants to October the seventeenth for commissioner, position number four, at which time the director will forward those applications to the board for review, and the board will vote, uh, make a motion and vote on a new commissioner at the next scheduled meeting on October the twenty-third.
Okay, I'm just trying to write this down. Um, we're extending the search for applicants to October...
October seventeenth, Friday.
Friday, okay. No, Thursday would have to be, wouldn't it? Is that a Friday?
It's a Friday.
Okay. To October seventeen, Friday, at which time the director will forward...
At, the director will forward the, uh, applications to the board members for their individual review, and a motion can be made at the next regular scheduled meeting on October the twenty-third to appoint a posi- a commissioner, a person to fill commission.
Okay, and is there time for interview of applicants, or?
We can...
Do we wanna...
Well, let's second it before we discuss it.
Yeah, well, I just was trying to write it out, so, okay, for members for individual review. Um, and then the vote would be, um, on October seventeenth?
Yes, sir.
Twenty-third.
Twenty-third, thank you.
On October twenty-third. Okay, Sean has moved.
Second.
Wendy has second. Discussion.
Um, this way, the reason I made the motion that way is we can, we give everybody, to include those that have applied in the past, um, the chance to still be in the running for the commissioner for spot. It gives all commissioners a chance to do their own individual research, and then we don't break the Open Public Meetings Act. If there is any group discussion or questions that can take place, they will take place in the next regular scheduled meeting.
So we'll do the interview of the applicants and vote, vote in the regular meeting. Are you all happy with that?
I am. Yeah, I made the motion.
Okay, okay, and we've got a second, or any other discussion?
I think, the one thing I would like to, I think the reason it would be fair is because this is, this is consistent with how we've always done it in the past. That, that, that's the one, the one thing I supported in, in that would be that historically, when we've appointed someone, we have left it open for a window. We've allowed people to be part of the process. I was concerned at the last meeting and, but, you know, I mean, it is what it is, that, uh, we appointed someone to a position without having that, that opportunity, I think, for it to be posted or advertised, or however we, we wanna word that. And, and that consistency factor going forward is the, the thing that I really think we should always strive to, to do. If we have a process in place, that we, we do it the same way every time. And, and that is my thought on that, so...
So the advertisement ended tomorrow, I guess. Is that good?
Sure.
Erin? Okay, all in favor?
I am.
Okay, that's passed unanimously. Okay, next item on the agenda is appointment of a head coach.
Right. As of today, I've got two more applications, I have nine right now. And I have a suggestion or recommendation for the search committee. And I'd like to see approved. And of course, I'll be on it. Uh, there will be, I would recommend Lisa Phillips, Dawn Brown, Commissioner Merrill, Julian Payton.
Uh, Julian Payton. That's acceptable? Okay.
She asked.
Okay.
And I'd like to start as soon as possible.
Okay. So the search then, the selection committee that you're asking to be set up will start work right away?
To review their resumes and...
And they will report back to the October meeting. Is that, is that what the plan would be in your mind?
Or I'd rather, you know, yes, but...
It may be reporting like the pump, but it isn't done yet.
But if we can do a special committee earlier, if we get that earlier,
Oh.
I'd like to get that done as soon as possible. I think it's probably gonna be probably our next meeting.
Okay, um, so, and then, then we'll...
I won't move that quick.
I don't know.
Sean, do you wanna move it, since you're happy with something other?
Oh, ch- uh, yeah. I'd like to make a motion that we approve the search committee recommended by the director of Ms. Lisa Phillips, Dan Brown.
Dawn.
Dawn, thank you, Dawn Brown. Uh, myself, and swimmer Julian Payton.
Yeah, to start work immediately.
To start work immediately.
Yeah, okay, seconded?
Second.
Wendy seconded. Comments? Steve, your part?
Yeah, I guess, the, the one thing that I'm, I'm consistently going back and forth on, on this is what we're looking for. You know, I think, what is the vision? You know, what are you gonna look for in a head coach? You know, I know when we had the meeting with the parents, the one thing that came up, qualified guy, or, or qualified coach, uh, good mentor, you know, all these things. But what do we want the program to look like? I've, I've yet to really hear, you know, what are we looking for? Are we just going to continue down the same road with, 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 you know, that we've been down the past two years? You know, 'cause on paper, you know, you know, Bill, Bill Patterson was a swimmer, you know, he swam in college, and he had all those things, and, and although some were happy with him, some, some weren't, and, and I, I really think it's because when, when he came in, we really had no vision of where this thing was going. And, and then he, he was somewhat handcuffed by a coaching staff that, that he didn't choose, you know, and, uh, and, and we just, for the last eighteen months, we, we floundered. And the, we, we have to get this so right this time. And, you know, I know other people have said that in the past, and I feel like I'm echoing them now. But we're on this edge right now with, with the coach, and if, if we don't get it right, NWAQ is, it's gone. Right now, I feel like, uh, with respect to NWAQ, it's a rudderless ship. It's, it's just, it's, it's just floating dangerously close to the rocks. And, and I'm so worried, and, and I would love for someone to please explain to me what the vision is. What, what are we looking for?
See, I don't think the vision's changed. I think what the parents, the swim team wanted, what the board has stated was they wanted a competitive program. I think, um, through various reasons that, uh, I'll say that Bill wasn't able to, he quite, there's no fair reasons, he wasn't able to produce a competitive program. And that's one of the reasons I believe the director let him go, because we had slipped so far. It's like, hey, you know, as you stated, the director saw that we were getting close to the rocks. So, uh, when you lose your top swimmers and the rest of your swimmers, uh, one of them who has graciously agreed to be on this, on this committee, um, are so disenfranchised, they don't wanna swim. And these are, these are, you know, these kids are our future, and, and we're not given a competitive program. That hasn't changed, the board never changed from competitive to recreation. And I believe even, even the public has said, through many, many open public comments, was that, you know, recreation teams on the other island, you know, it's a bridge away, and unfortunately, some people were driving to another competitive program all the way up in Bellamy here, because they weren't getting in here. So the board has never said they didn't want a non-competitive, they wanted a recreation team. We've always wanted a recreation team.
So, so...
Excuse me, competitive team, thank you.
So let, so let me go forward a little bit if I can.
Oh, for a couple of seconds, but, alright.
For, well, I'm, I'm going to speak for a long, in a couple of seconds probably on this, if that's okay.
Probably not, but we'll see.
Well, well, we're going to go for it anyway. And, and here, and here's, and here's why. When you look at, I've thought like, what, what, what did NWAQ look like when it was healthy? It was Saturday mornings. That was the, that was it. If you, if you could have looked at one thing, and you think, okay, when did NWAQ look the healthiest Saturday morning? Why would a kid get up and miss cartoons and miss playing with their friends and, you know, not sleep in? Because those, those younger coaches, you know, not just the senior, junior, senior team. It was those bronze coaches, the silver coaches, the, the gold practice group coaches. Whether it was Annie, and Co- you know, Caitlin, Amanda, Kyle, whoever it was that inspired those kids to come in. What I'm worried is, and this is the truth, that we bring a coach in so we could get the greatest coach. He's only, he or she is only, only going to coach those junior, senior kids. Unless they can put a coaching staff in place that inspires these kids, the younger kids, your numbers are, are never going to get to where you want it to be. The, the only way you're ever going to get the numbers where we want it to be is if you inspire little kids to, to continue coming back. And, and if we could, we could find the best coach, bring him in here, and if we don't give that person the liberty to build a, to build a team, then it's going to fail. And, uh...
I believe we gave the last coach the liberty to build a team, we gave him a whole bunch of new programs.
Really?
Everything else, yeah.
You, you can...
I think he started a high school program, he brought in a pre, what were those, little people called? Um, besides little people, kids.
So you tell...
Excuse my...
So you tell me, Sean, you...
Um, he brought, he brought the little, um, pre-novice, thank you very much, the novice kids in. These are kids that couldn't even swim a lap. And now you can't do the Saturday mornings that you're talking about to inspire that competition, because you've got these novices that you can't do, uh, relays with, team relays with. So, so that coach had that latitude, he, we, we gave him support and he failed. And, you know, he succeeded in some things and he failed in others, and definitely didn't build the team, and that's why we're at where we're at. So do we give the new coach a chance and support? I think we do.
Let's, let's just stop for a second now, because we're starting to do what we do with everything else, and that is live in the past and start fighting about whatever was back over there, instead of doing what's the present. And in the present, the one thing is, yes, it is a competitive team. There's no qualification on that, that's been consistent since the beginning. There are other values that go with it, and if we have a good coach, the other values are gonna come out. But it is a competitive team, and we have a motion for a selection committee to get to work right away and take the, translate the applications that we've got from the coaching organizations and the swimming organizations into something or other. Um, and so, let's go from there, and we've, Steve, your comments are appropriate on being conscious, and these people have to be conscious of whatever the dream is, given what the people can provide, you know, but it is a competitive team. Is, I'm sorry, I wasn't gonna talk much, I did. Um, any other comments?
Well, you know, this is important enough to talk about, so...
Well, I, I just have a question, because I, I think part of what Steve's saying is, is it, the, the cra- is the criteria, is that he's concerned about the criteria. I mean, I understand all, the other part of it, but it's really the criteria, and, and so, not having been through this process before, um, my assumption is that the criteria is very specific, um, and, and that there are objective as well as subjective, um, uh, points to be evaluated. Is that, is that a fair assumption?
Yes, it is, very much so.
Okay, okay.
One thing real quick, I was part of the last process to pick a coach, and we had no direction.
The problem's the conflict of interest with kids in the pool right now.
Yeah.
You know, because with your position.
Well, no, what I'm saying is, we had no direction in picking this coach. And that's what I wanna make sure, that these five people who are sitting down, that they have direct, what are you looking for? I want to know, I want to know what these five people are going to look for. And I don't think that that is unreasonable to, to ask that question. You've put together five people now. What are these five people going to look for in a head coach? Because the people that I think have kids that swim here wanna know, I wanna know.
But you're a parent, and you're fighting with the district.
I'm not a parent right now, Alan, I am not a parent right now.
So...
Alan, I, I am not a parent right now, trust me on this. I am a person who's trying to mend something that's broken. I am a person that's trying to represent other people. That, that, no, no, hold on, that is a very, I, I love you guys, man, but that, that, that would make me a very shallow person, and I am not a shallow person, thank you.
That will say a moment.
Man?
Yes, Sean.
Um, so, since the search committee was appointed tonight, um...
Well, we haven't voted on it yet.
Right, that's very true, and I'm about ready to hop on. Um, I, I would say, I probably need to give them a chance to get together and meet before... I would say I probably need to give them a chance to get together and meet before we come up with an objective and subjective answer to your question, Steve.
Thank you.
Would that be fair enough?
That is perfectly fair, thank you.
Okay, are we ready for the question?
The answer describes the...
Yes.
Exactly. And it also describes the process, so we need to make sure.
But that's you guys. If you want to change it, that's how you change it.
That's correct.
Do, question, time for the question? Steve's concerns are going to go to the committee. The committee will discuss on the first thing.
Thank you, very much.
As I understand it, otherwise we're voting to approve the Director's recommendation. Correct? All in favor?
Aye.
Passed. Okay, the review and approval of the 2015 budget. We have the budget in sort of draft form. We haven't got all of the numbers in and it's going to take a little while to do that. And so, at the beginning of the meeting, I suggest that we will probably move that to next Tuesday at seven PM right here. You're welcome to come and fuss with numbers anytime you want. We'll have lots of numbers to fuss with. But hopefully they'll be together in a way that you can actually see a program-oriented budget for the district, which has been quite a challenge for all of us through two workshops and so on. Okay, but it is intelligible, which makes it different from the old QuickBooks one. So that will put off until Tuesday. Director's report.
What time is the special meeting?
Seven PM. Yeah, keep it the same time, that way we don't forget, gets confusing. No Director's report?
I spelled it out. Staff report and stuff that I wanted to say.
Status of the new pump went underneath facilities and maintenance. The environmental report was going to the special meeting on Tuesday. So public comments are what's left by the looks of it.
I added my name.
It's okay, you can do it. Carol?
I'm asleep.
Of course.
Carol, can you give me one second, please, a minute so I can catch up? Thank you very much, I appreciate it. I'm drawing, I can't follow the... Thank you, man. Carol, I'm...
I'm shouting personally anyway, thank you.
I wanted to speak about three things, so that should be about a minute each. So tell me if I'm running out of time. There's been a lot of discussion about the role of Board members. And as a person in this community and as a voter in Island County and as a person who's raised two kids in this community, and we've lived here nineteen years now, I think that you can be an excellent Commissioner if you are a master swimmer or if you have children on in activities affiliated with the district. You're here in the capacity to represent your community. And if you can do that and use your passion for whatever your affiliation is with the district to help keep you engaged in the importance of this work, then I think it can be a good fit. So I think that's an unfair statement to say that those can't be married and be effective. You're supposed to bring with you your knowledge from your professional roles or your life experience or whatever that is and help provide leadership to the Director and his role. That's what you're here to do. I'm, you know, really disappointed. I understand why, and I understand, you know, Alan reading what Brad, it makes, you know, very clear sense. I'm disappointed that you're not moving forward in putting Vicki in a seat that she was already, in my mind, me personally, selected for. And you spoke highly of her and selected her for that role. And now, there's going to be a process. And to be very honest, and this may be inaccurate because I haven't looked at anything, I don't recall me personally, when Kirk and David took their positions, that there was two distinct advertising and interview processes. Perhaps there was, I don't recall that. So when we look at consistency and process, I just don't, I don't remember that. And Vicki applied for an open board position and could have as well been elected that night. And I understand, you know, that you were selected that night. And I guess in my, since this is my three minutes, I can't think of a person with greater integrity and commitment to this district. And I would be so proud if she was selected for this commission. And lastly, when you look at the, you know, Steve, your very interesting comments about the coach and, you know, reflecting on, you know, why Westville able to be successful. And, you know, that role of head coach is a leadership role. It is, and it is why the Saturday breakfast is busy. Because there's peer coaching, because those little ones and the younger swimmers may know the big swimmers. There's a community that's been built on that team and that has to come from that head coach. So it has to be a lot more than just the technical aspects of having a competitive team. The whole package is somebody who is multifaceted enough to create that experience for our Park District. And I guess I would not look at the parents or those stakeholders to be the ones who define the vision. Again, that comes from you and that comes from Gino as the Director of, you know, what are we going to create for this community? Certainly, you want your community's involvement and interest in that. But you're here to look for the good of the whole and identify what that is for that community. I mean, I think that's, I think that's very important. I think those are all...
Very well said, but I would like to answer one question you had, the second question you had. And that was the difference between Kirk and Dave. Dave actually was elected. Dave was not appointed. Kirk was appointed. And that would be, I just thought I should point that out.
So that they voted in together.
Yes, but everything else, yeah, it was very well said and thank you very much. You're welcome. He filled Lori Clark's position.
Lori chose, yeah, Lori chose not to vote for the political chairs.
Yeah, very much so.
Any comments from Board members?
One comment, and that would be what I was bringing up all ago and I've had time to reflect a little. And the reason that I was so passionate about it is that when I was part of that committee, I really, I probably wasn't qualified to be on, in one respect. And I know that I was, but I had no direction really. I get given like, I think at the time there were probably fifteen resumes. And oh my goodness, what did I know? You know, I really, you know, I really had no idea what I was looking for, you know. And I know another parent that was on it at the time dropped out of it partway through it. And that would be the other thing I would hope for, that these five people are committed for the whole process. Because, and I think that even during that time, yourself and Scott Voet kind of were in and out partly on it. And the only one that was consistent through that process probably was myself. I know a couple of swimmers were part of it towards the end, I believe, the team captains. But I just think none of us really had a sense of, hey, here's what we're looking for. And that's my hope for you all is that when you get together, that you have that, you know, you know, that focal point to where this is what we're looking for. And that you're all committed to it desperately bad because we need that, so, thank you very much.
Thanks, Steve. The next meeting of the Parks Commission is a special meeting next Tuesday, right here at seven PM. The next regular meeting is on October sixteenth and at 2014, right here at seven PM.
October twenty-third.
October twenty-third?
Twenty-third, yeah.
How come it's sixteen on my...
Sixteenth is...
Okay, let's do this all again.
Sorry.
I thought I really had something here that was concrete. Okay, September, next Tuesday, whatever date that is.
The twenty-third.
September twenty-third, we have a special meeting. We're going to do the budget and we're going to look at this environmental report, which tells us that we've got all sorts of stuff that could be done and save us money if we pay more money. I'm not quite sure what it all means, but be here and we'll all thrash it out and try and figure it out.
What time is that?
That's at seven PM in this room.
Thank you.
And then, our next regular monthly meeting is on the third Thursday, which I assume then is October twenty-third, is it?
No, it's the sixteenth.
Okay.
The phone had to make a motion, can't count.
On October sixteenth, we are going to have our next regular meeting, which I think is what I said in the first place. We're all invested. Okay, at seven PM in this room to go through the normal list of things plus the Commissioner Ford appointment.
But actually, two things about that then. One is, yeah, so the seventeen. But additionally, there is a, I don't know if, well, anyway. There's a candidates forum, you know, cover on the sixteenth at six PM. So I think I assumed it was mindful that it was moved.
It was the election.
Correct.
Do you want to move it? It's, what's, does the twenty-third look okay to everybody? As long as everybody's here, this is the crowd that comes when people come, so. Is the twenty-third good for you guys or not?
I think it's good.
October?
October twenty-third. Well, if it's an all candidates meeting, then, you know, the people, if you're politically interested in your community, you'll want to go, so we could do ours on the twenty-third.
Okay, thank you.
As long as it's okay with everybody.
I'd like to make a motion that we move next month's regular scheduled meeting to, from October sixteen to October the twenty-third.
So you're all right, that was your original view?
Not yet, we haven't passed the motion.
I second it.
Seconded, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I will start all over again, I apologize for wasting your life. We have a special meeting September twenty-third. And that's going to be budget and environmental report, costs, grants, that type of stuff. And then on October twenty-third, we're going to have a meeting at seven PM right here to do our normal business plus the appointment to Commissioner Ford's position. Okay?
On the twenty-third.
On the twenty-third of October, yes, thank you. Don't confuse me again.
I'd like to make a motion that we adjourn.
I think I need it.
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all for coming. And Vicki, it's good to see you, I'm sorry for the... Wait, we've got to sign this, sign this, please. We signed these things, it's my... Thank you. Steve, don't go away.